My name is Keith Dennis. I'm the Community Development Program Manager with Southeast Arizona Governments Organization. CEGO.
CEGO.
Oh, CEGO.
Y'all know what that is?
Sort of, yeah.
Because you just sort of said it.
Right. We're the Council of Governments. We're a nonprofit governed by a board made up of elected officials from fifteen different government agencies or local units of government. From Santa Cruz, Cochise, Graham and Great Lakes counties. So the mayor of Bisbee, for example, is on CEGO's executive board. And we do transportation planning, economic development, the area agency on aging. I'm in community development. They have a transit program. There's all kinds of things that we do. I'm just, that's just my, now the introduction's over. So I'm the Community Development Program Manager. A good deal of that concerns doing community development block grant stuff. How familiar are you ladies with community development block grants?
Yeah.
It comes from HUD. It goes through the Arizona Department of Housing. And they determine which communities get how much money, which, which communities get how much money every year. It's determined by census and population and poverty statistics. And every year, a different county will, a different community in each county will have their turn. Like this year, it's Benson's turn. In 2024, it's Bisbee's turn to get its CBG money, the ones that are just to give you. Then you have these competitive grant rounds. One of them's called State Special Projects, which is a statewide competition. The other one's called the Colonial Set Aside Grant. And that's, basically, the Department of Housing captures and holds on to a million dollars of the ten and a half or so million they get for CBG from HUD each year. And every other year, it becomes one point nine or two million bucks. And they do this competitive round. So when Bisbee gets its turn to do CBG in two years, its regular, what we call regional account, is going to be in the four hundred to five hundred thousand dollar range. That's going to be the grant they're going to be, you know, awarded in two years. The Colonial Set Aside is two million. It's competitive. But if you look, y'all will take your notes, this is cool. If you look on that PowerPoint, it's really small. We didn't have a screen, and it's fine. But, you know, if you look at the second page, you know, all those dots, those little diamonds on that map, those are all of the Colonius in the state that are, there's USDA has, considers all these ones colonialist, whatever. But the Department of Housing is like, you actually need to be certified by us if you want to participate in a CBG thing. So if you look at this, you can see Nogales on the lower left, you know, down there where Nogales is. And then on up to Clifton, it's like, I'm showing you a map of all the Colonius in the state. And you can see they're all in those, almost all of those four counties. So it's like, CEGO has this potential for a competitive advantage because they have to be a hundred and fifty miles from the border. So the rest of the state doesn't even get to bite at this apple, but we do.
One of the biggest criteria is, is the hundred, I'm just reiterating, the hundred and fifty miles from the border. That's why it's not available statewide. That's what makes the ones that they've just received good.
So if you remember in 2020, I was in this room, we did a hearing for CBG. And it was for the Colonial Set Aside Round. And we got, it was about three hundred and fifty thousand or so in competitive Colonial's money to finish Tin Town. They had done the basin to catch the water, and then they did some streets. And then the third phase wasn't enough to do with their regular CBG. So we got a competitive grant to finish it, right? And these projects, you have, they have to be what's called shovel-ready. All the upfront work has to be done. It's basically like, if you're going to be competitive, it's like, it's just, we're ready to put it out to bid. Just give us the money and we'll do it. Here's all the proof. We got all this stuff developed ahead of time, right? So anyway, so Bisbee, I mean, that was the first Colonial's grant Bisbee ever got. And at that time, let's get now almost to the point, just telling you a big old long story, I'm sorry. At that time, in 2020, the Saginaw neighborhood people were agitating for housing rehab. They wanted houses that were never coming back to be torn down. They wanted houses that could be some fixing to be fixed. And so Theresa Coleman, which was city manager, she started that effort with them. And it took the Department of Housing two years, over two years, almost two and a half years, to finally say, this is eligible. And then the next business day, they said, and now the Colonial's round is here. And you have two months instead of four, like you had in 2020.
The good news is I found all the notes from the previous.
Good.
You know, I found all the surveys and, and all of that, which led Keith and I from the city to make the decision on the replicators and the small, we had enough information from two years ago to really decide on what we thought the neighborhood already had said they wanted.
Exactly. So because it's what the Saginaw folks said, that they, they're the ones that led all of us.
Yes.
They led the city. They led CEGO. So we finally got, you know, eligible to do this. And we got a really short window, and that stinks, but whatever, we're going to do it anyway. Because if we don't, we have to wait two more years. Okay. So our idea was, how do we make the biggest impact to the most people? And it's instead of, you know, going like, we're going to rebuild two houses. No, it's, it's, how about fifteen thousand dollars of whatever you need for home repairs for as many people as we can get qualified and have an estimate drawn up of what needs to be done and the cost estimate of labor and materials? As many of whom as we can get in the door before the grant deadline, which is September 30th, right?
And let me say this, that we, the city manager is so a hundred percent behind this. So, which is why I'm assigned to it. The city inspectors are going to be assigned to it. And we know that we're going to meet the timelines.
And we already started working on it.
Yes.
Hey, what is your name?
Melissa Hartman.
And you work for the city?
Yeah, I'm planner slash housing.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. You brought me on part-time just to deal with a lot of these types of issues.
In 2020, I found out that my next-door neighbor had a background in all of this stuff. And she wound up working for CEGO for about two years, helping develop what's called our Housing Rehab Guidelines, which I have copied out here. We can get you guys a copy of it.
Yes.
Problem with them is, we need to update the.
Yes, I know. One of my check, one of my financial charts is from a year ago, and I get it. So I wrote this.
Yeah.
And then this has to be approved by HUD before you can apply for the money. So I spent my time at CEGO doing this and a few other projects. So that also got us kind of right in the position.
Right. Because if we were having to start on that right now, we'd be dead in a while.
Oh, my God.
It took a while. So anyway, so the idea is, you know, to do just that. And then the amount of work that it's going to take from the building inspectors and the people doing the income qualification will be lightened a little bit if we just do a little bit of what's really, and our application, it says, what are the three things you most need help with at your house? Right? And then we'll, you know, if the homeowner knows, we don't know. But speaking of homeowners, this is called Owner Occupied Housing Rehab. This is important. You have to live in the house as the owner. Permanent residents, you have to have homeowner's insurance. You have to have a household income of eighty percent or less of the area you need.
Which is?
On page. And it's really small because it's PowerPoint.
No, it's small.
For one person, it's thirty-six thousand, one fifty. For three people, it's forty-six thousand, two people, forty-one thousand. So you're going to see it right here.
Oh, yeah. The Housing Rehab Pilot Program, it's very small, I'm sorry.
And it's also, when you get your application, it's the front page. And both mine and Marissa's phone numbers are there. All you have to do.
Would you say about thirty-one thousand, what was that?
So if you're a one-person household and you make less than thirty-six thousand, one fifty, you qualify.
Is that on here?
Yeah.
No, on mine, is it on mine?
It's.
It's right here. It's, I think.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's even smaller.
Oh, it's this, that's why I'm not reading it.
It's right here.
Yeah, I can read this.
Game and pill.
All right, here's this. Is that Marissa's?
If you'd like that one instead of that, it's just the. It's just the bigger, yeah, take the big one.
So, yeah.
My neighbor is Sharon Mitchell.
Okay, I don't.
She was involved with all of this before she got sick and was doing all her things.
Okay.
And worked at CEGO for years.
Oh, okay.
So, and she teaches me a lot.
Wow.
Good.
Yeah, so I.
Good, and, and you know.
I'm sort of here for her too.
I see, no, that's good.
Yeah, and any questions you need, everything has got my phone number or my email on it. And I am just fine now. I'm not around Thursday and Friday, but I've got CEGO to cover for me. I've got some personal things that I.
And there's contact information on the website that we do right there.
And don't hesitate to do that. Because like I said, I was sitting down with two people today and getting it done. It's getting it done.
Okay.
So there's a couple of things. In that PowerPoint, it says there's going to be a hearing on September 27th.
And that's wrong.
I was wrong. It's the 20th.
Yep.
That's a big no-no on there, and I want to call your attention to it. It's not the 27th.
I'll change it right here.
Yep, just, you know, I, I got my wires crossed.
And it'll be in the paper as the 20th as well.
Awesome. Yep.
And after that, because they'll adopt this plan that we were talking about, that'll be one of the things that happens. And then after the adoption, Steve had promised that it would go on the web.
We'll do a big announcement and he put it on the website.
And posted on the website.
Yes, and it's on the main page.
Right.
Yep. So let me get back to the, the actual meat and potatoes of this. Okay, there's, you know, there's three parts of this. And one is the outreach to get people interested and engaged with the program. I think we're doing pretty good on that.
I know we're doing it.
Number two is what Melissa's talking about. It's not enough to say, I make thirty-six, one fifty. I'm good. No, they want you to prove it. So you got to have the documentation that backs that up. And it's got a shelf life of six months, right? Which will be fine. But what, that can sometimes take a minute because you're like, oh, I didn't know I needed this thing. And I got to look at this bill or this bank statement or whatever. But it looks like we're doing pretty good with it so far. So the next step after somebody's qualified, then we have to go answer those three questions. What do you most need? Maybe it's a roof, maybe it's an HVAC system or a swamp cooler, new water heater, whatever.
Going to look at what you prioritized.
And then how, you know, how many of those three things can we do with fifteen thousand dollars? And the city folks are going to be leading the effort to develop those cost estimates, which would be labor and materials. And so both of those things have to happen for each homeowner that's going to be in the program for September 20th, which is tomorrow. It's not tomorrow.
It feels like tomorrow.
It, we need to treat it like it's tomorrow.
You know, I think, and let me say this, because I've been doing the outreach. I think we're going to get anywhere from seven to ten applications that are going to qualify. And I think that's a great beginning. I, I mean, I do, for this short timeline, for this short timeline. And I think the second thing I want to say to you is, when Keith was earlier explaining that in 2024, the city of Bisbee gets an allocation of, another different allocation of CBVG funds, we hope that our program is moving so smoothly that the council will say, you know what? Put that money there. That is really the, I hope I'm not saying.
No, no, no.
But that is really the, the long-term goal. Even if they don't allocate the whole four hundred thousand, we have so much already in the works that, that they're going to like, that we are kind of doing this on that money. And as long as we still have Steve, he's very dedicated to housing. Housing is, is one of his top three priorities. I can't tell you how many times he's said that to me. So I just, I don't want you to get disillusioned if we only get a few done in this first go-round. And I, the last thing I'm going to say, and I'll give it back to you, is it's never quick. It's federal funding, just, just so you know.
So let me elaborate on what you were just saying about 2024. The, the mayor and council are going to be the ones to make this decision. And it's two years from now, so I'll preface it with that. But that being said, let's talk about possibilities for 2024. Colonial Set Aside, which is what we're here to talk about, is every two years. That means the next one is in 2024, which happens to be the same year that Bisbee gets its regular regional account. Potential to double dip.
Yeah, that's nice.
Now, you can do housing rehab with Colonial's money. But what you can do with your regular CBVG that you can't do with Colonial's money is the city could do like it did with Tin Town years ago, declare the neighborhood to be a slum and blight. The CBVG national objectives require that it either benefit low-modern income people, address some kind of urgent health hazard or emergency, or eliminate slum and blight. So if you declare a neighborhood like to do with Tin Town, slum and blight, you don't have to ask how much money anybody makes for Colonial's stuff. If it's housing rehab, right? What I'm saying is, if they, if they did that, normally you'd have to say, well, is this neighborhood fifty-one percent low-modern? And now you don't even have to worry about it because it's a slum and blight, so we're, we're getting rid of it.
Is that how they got the new sewer system?
Hmm, no, I don't think so.
No, that was city money, that was city money.
And, yeah.
But here's, here's an idea though.
Like a debt bid?
Check, check me out. We, we do a pilot program now.
Yes.
We get hopefully eight to ten.
Yes.
We get people, we get people hungry for more. We keep their name and their information on our waiting list.
Oh, good.
And we updated, we updated within six months of filing a Colonial's application in 2024. Now here's, here it is, the one-two. Bisbee uses its regional account money to demolish vacant houses in Saginaw. And they build the lots. All you need is a letter from the property owner saying, you have my permission. They don't have to buy it. Then you use the same Colonial's money, or the different pot of money, to fix even more houses in Saginaw. But also, we could open it up and say, Tin Town, Bakerville, Zaca Teques Canyon, if it's not floodplain, and Saginaw. There's four Colonius now in Bisbee. So in two years, we could say, all right, it's open to anybody in those four neighborhoods to do housing rehab. And then you could make some buildable lots and get rid of some of the, the fuel, the fire. In Saginaw. It's just an idea, now it's on the record. We got time to talk about it, but the, but the main thing is right now is to get some points on the board to get something started. And we know it's going to be small, and that's okay.
But it's a bigger, longer-term plan, sure, specifically.
If your neighbor can set that roof.
Oh, yeah.
Did we make an impact? It's always like, that's a big impact for that one homeowner, you know, times eight or 10, great.
And I know Step Up Bisbee Nakro has two houses in your area. The city just sold one of them that has been done. And that, that was East Street?
Yes, East Street.
The East Street House on the end. So Step Up Bisbee Nakro did that for workforce housing. And so a worker was able to buy that. And then on D Street behind, they're doing a second one. So between this and the Step Up Bisbee Nakro.
They're also got one at the end of Cochise Road.
They do, and that one's almost done. I'm waiting for a certificate of occupancy on that.
Super cute house.
Buy the, buy the beer, please.
Okay. Yeah. That horrible house.
And so now kids, they took it all the way down.
No, but I don't want to. I live on Cochise Road.
Oh, okay. But I just want to say that, that there, the method to this madness really is a longer term. If you don't start.
Nothing will happen.
Right.
So I'm not sure I need to be here, I just, unless you want to.
No, please.
My idea was.
This is a public hearing.
Okay, okay. Well, I didn't know when you were going to stop, and my bedtime's coming.
Can I say one more thing?
Yes, go ahead.
That I left out, it's really important. And then we should open a public hearing and do all that business that we, because this is CBVG requirements that we can, right? And I have a sign-in sheet, I forgot. I'm going to give you guys to prove we were here. But one more thing I want to say, this is pretty important. It's a grant, but it comes in the form of a five-year forgivable loan that depreciates twenty percent each year. The idea is, don't flip your house after the government fixes it, fixes it up.
Very good.
And don't turn it into an Airbnb. You have to be owner occupied. So.
Well, should there be a death and immediate family inherited? That's fine. I have that happen, that's why I always bring that up. That is fine.
As long as it's an immediate family member.
And as long as they aren't killing each other to do this.
Uh, as, as long as it's an immediate family member who is low to moderate income.
Right, yeah.
You can do that. You can't let your rich cousin move in. It's got to be somebody low to moderate income. Now I'm done, and I would like to say, it's a public hearing, so public, please.
I'm dying to hear your idea.
Well, I didn't realize, well, I didn't realize a lot of stuff about this. But especially, let's just talk about Saginaw and Tin Town. I think what's important for those neighborhoods is to feel like they're a real neighborhood. They aren't just, and each house being done is nice, but I would like to, at least be, have people consider for some of the money to go to improving, like, shade trees, maybe shade trees by the bus stops, the two bus stops, solar lights, so that if I'm living in Tin Town, say, pick me up at the bus stop at 10 o'clock, I'm there with a light. Things maybe at the kids' little park, that everything's falling apart in those parks. I don't even think they're safe. There's two parks, there's one in Tin Town, there's one in Saginaw. And there could all.
So interesting, the mine has just been asking me where they could donate some kids' playground equipment.
Yeah, okay. So we got two. And then also, I've seen communities where they have, it's usually by a park, but there's a, you walk a ways and then you do an exercise on a, something you walk on, and then you walk again. Those could be.
Like a walking path?
Like exercise stations.
Yeah, and that, and that shows, that shows we're really invested in them, in their health and what.
Vogue is putting one in at, is there a human park?
Is that the one up by the pool?
Higgins.
Higgins?
Oh.
It's up by the pool, yes. Well, there's one in.
Okay.
There's one in with a, with a roof in there. I just went and looked at it a few days ago with my neighbor. We went to this.
And they have this exercise?
They do.
Well, if they keep doing those, we don't need any of this money.
Well, but, but what you're saying is, but these are.
To make it seem safer to the community, people with kids, healthier and, and.
If there's nothing wrong with collaboration.
We should, the climate change with shade trees.
Ooh.
There's a science sheet. Can I make a, give you a tip on that?
We got pens.
Okay, of course you do. Can I give you a tip on that, that you just said?
Yeah.
You might want to find, there's a Wachukka City, like, Healthy Community Association. These were graduates of the Cochise Leadership Academy from like two or three years ago that, you know, they make you do a little plan, do something cool in your community. Tell us about it. So their plan, and they, they did it, was they formed a little nonprofit. And it was exactly the kind of stuff you're talking about, community gardens, and can we get some exercise equipment through here? And maybe a walking path? And Wachukka City's actually doing park improvements right now with their CBVG. Anyway, there's some nonprofit, I don't remember the name of it, but you might Google Wachukka City Healthy Communities or something. And just ask them, hey, how did you guys do this?
Okay.
What did you do, and how did you do it, and what can we learn from you?
Okay.
I know one of the things that, as, as opposed to a community garden, they have a production garden.
Today.
Wachukka City.
Oh.
Okay, so, you know, it's not open to the public. And then all the produce that is grown is distributed to four different sites.
Like food banks, kind of thing?
No, it's like to a trailer park.
Yeah.
I mean, it's right to.
Wow.
Got it. The neighbors that are invested in that.
Yeah, and they have a, a dynamite labor source with, I guess, sergeants that are there doing drone training.
Right.
And these guys, you know, the idea of a good time is to pick up rock. I mean, literally, you know, the.
Strapping.
Yeah.
Yes.
Strapping, yes.
So they're actually doing these collaborations like you're suggesting that, that happen in our areas.
Well, can I just summarize and reiterate a couple of things? There's a lot of work to do. And the city is really stepping up and doing it. I mean, the bill, getting the building officials on board with this is really cool, and you, Melissa. But even with all cylinders firing, we only have a limited amount of time. So the, the, it's going to be critical that we get as many applications as possible and then say, here's a stack of them, guys, go out and develop these cost estimates. When the city passes their resolution that's required for the CBVG application, they have to pass a resolution saying, we're going to apply for this money, right? And it's going to say what the dollar value of that grant is. This meeting was noticed sixteen days before the hearing in the paper because that's a CBVG requirement as well. And the one on the 20th will also be sixteen days or more. What I'm saying is, by the 20th, there won't be another sixteen days.
Oh, sure.
Right? So that's when the door shuts, and we got all we can get this time. And I'm already kind of sad about it because you know there's going to be more people, right? But, but it's okay because we'll keep them on the waiting list. And just like we're saying tonight, we didn't forget about Saginaw.
Oh, no.
We kept the flame going, and we'll do it again for two years from now and come back and get the folks that didn't get on the boat the first time.
So is all the money going to go to the housing thing? The one point nine?
No, no, no.
That's what's available.
That's what's available. That's why we just said the city's seeking up to one point nine. Really, it's fifteen thousand times however many houses.
That's how they'll award it.
And CEGO's fees on top of that, which doesn't, the city doesn't pay for any of it. It's all coming from HUD money. It's all grant stuff, but.
How many houses are altogether? Are there a hundred, fifty and fifty? I'm going to be sat in there.
No, it isn't.
A hundred and forty-something parcels in the neighborhood. That doesn't mean they all got a house on them or the house is livable. So maybe it's a hundred, I don't know, maybe it's ninety.
Well, I know we sent out eighty letters, eighty-some letters is what we sent out. I got two back today. So I have talked to a few people that don't qualify. You know, out of the eighties, this is, oh, wow, guess, I'm going to say at least half, at least forty probably qualify. Of the eight, eighty we have addressed as far as.
Too bad we couldn't have done this before the house, all that housing stuff. Because a lot of people wouldn't have moved if they knew they had some help. You know, Sam.
This is definitely going to improve the neighborhood.
Yep.
And if it's eighty houses, I don't know what the real number is. If we get eight out of eighty, that's 10%.
That's 10%.
Good start.
That's, that's kind of where I came to my number, of saying 10 is.
Well, I'm glad I came just to hear that and understand that. Yeah, that's real helpful. Yeah.
So we have applications online. They're on the city website, they're on the CEGO website, if anybody can do that. Or if they have trouble, I have a stack at City Hall right there in the front. You can pick one up. We've attached an envelope if you want to turn it back into City Hall so that your confidentiality is, is, is kept. There's really only two of us looking and qualifying you. I have lots of experience at qualifying people based on government income. I spent over a year at CEGO doing it on a government program. So I, we can get people qualified pretty quickly with just one, if I even need to make a call, it's one or two. But see, you're, we're asking for a bank statement and a deed and everything.
Sure, don't you need six months of bank statements?
No, I'm only taking, no.
Because HUD for housing requires that.
No, we're not. Typically, people are bringing two, and I'll take them both.
Okay.
The, the CARES program was a CDVG program.
Yes, it was.
And we never got any hard times from them about how many pay stubs.
I was on the board of the Bisbee Community Y.
Oh, okay.
That was, they were strict, because we owed them a hundred thousand dollars.
It's probably HUD money, but a different program within HUD.
Yeah.
Are you running into, um, people not being able to read the application?
Yes, and I'm sitting down, I went to one today.
Okay.
And we went through some things we did not fill it out, because we, we did enough for her, this, you know, after about an hour, we did enough. I must say, her house was spick and span, you could have.
Yeah.
Anything, beautiful, beautiful lady. Um, and I made an appointment to go back, and we'll fill it out next week. But what we did do today was gather her documents, so she has her documents, we went over the application, and I'll go back and we'll fill it out. That's why I wanted to take Marissa with me. And so, and then, uh, I dropped one off to another lady, and she's supposed to call me if she needs help. Now, this lady I had does, does not read, and, you know, I don't wanna.
Sure.
So I was happy to do it and explain it, but, yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
And she was eighty-five and beautiful, we decided, because I'm seventy-one and beautiful, that we were up here. But I'd been there long enough, and I knew I had a few days, so I've got everything I need, it's all in this stack and a file on our dining room table, and we'll finish and turn it in.
That's much.
So that's, yeah. And I don't mind doing that, honestly.
Right, I, I worked for, um, Roosevelt School District in South Phoenix for thirty years.
Oh, wow.
That, you know, that's something I'm used to doing as well, yeah.
Most people really, not most people, my experience this week has been that they need help xeroxing their documents. And so, again, today, before I went to the lady's house, I met him at City Hall, only because your printer is so fast. And, and, and it's too hard to have people go up to them, my office is in the mine tour, and so we met at City Hall at one-thirty, um, they brought their packets and xeroxed, delivered in the files, they're done. All I need to do is qualify them to now.
I have a question, I have a number of friends in Saginaw, and, um, one of them, he's seventy years old, paid for his house cash because he sold another house.
Yeah.
Um, but his income would qualify him for this, is he gonna be?
He's fine.
He's fine, okay.
He's fine.
He's not gonna go to the bottom of the heap necessarily, because.
No, and you know, here's what I'm running into too, you know, there was two of us, my wife passed away, you know, so already this week I'm seeing lots of scenarios, and I'm like, I don't have. Then it's just your income, you know, it's, it's.
Are you having people go door to door?
Jesse said he would. She, I didn't know that, I talked, I talked to her, but I didn't.
Because I know the family that, I think everybody in the family's retarded.
Oh. That can hear.
And they scream at each other, my name, my friend lives near them, and they would need the money, but I don't even know how you could explain it. Well, I, I don't think they're, well, anyway, they're difficult.
Yes.
Oh, yeah. But they aren't gonna come to City Hall to get anything, so.
We held a community meeting last Thursday, it's a little school.
We had five attendants.
We had about two dozen people there, we brought two dozen applications, and they went bye-bye that night, out the door with people.
And people were taking, if we, had we known, we would have brought more, because they were taking their neighbors.
Oh, good. So maybe my friend's product, and the people I know, yeah.
And then Jesse has, she has said she's gonna help us and do some door-to-door. I was gonna sort of hold a little, if you need help, come to the church, but I, I, I have changed my mind, that sitting on a one-to-one really works a little bit better.
Yeah, private, confidential.
Exactly.
We also mailed out a letter to everybody in the neighborhood we've got that's received eighty or ninety letters or whatever.
I just don't know if these people can even read this letter.
I got you, I'm just saying, um.
And they need, they need help, I mean, that's why they're yelling at each other.
I'm not guaranteeing anything, but we can at least, I, we can ask Jesse, the neighborhood, to watch people if they know who we were talking about, and, yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, and what about the, the many people who don't know how to answer questions, you know, I, I, I'm a secondaire, so I always go, you know, about the ones who really need it. But this time around is sort of getting it started, and next time you have a lot more time to.
And if someone comes in, like a gentleman did today, and said, can you drop one off on my neighbors and talk to them, I took down the information, and yes, I will.
Okay.
Okay. Yes, I will. So neighbors are kind of taking care of neighbors a little bit, I'd say, we're just barely, barely into this, but, you know.
I'm, I'm excited about it, I'm cautiously optimistic, but I'm acting every day on purpose, as if I'm in mortal terror.
Yes.
Failure, if you drop a plate or do something wrong, and I'm, I'm just doing that to myself on purpose, just so that. Look, just on a personal note, like, I started at Cego five years ago, mm, two days ago, right, I've been there five years in like three days. And I became being developed program manager like eighteen months after I started. And I thought, there's all this money on the table that we're missing, and we should be getting more of this, and everybody's talking about housing, housing, housing. So I'm like, well, why not just start with CDVG and fixing up the houses we have? There's nothing anybody's gonna build today that's gonna be as cool as these funky old Bisbee houses, especially like in Saginaw, that's just the whole story, that it's just neat, right? So same vote we have, step one, preserve the existing housing for future generations. So I wanted to do this, I was in meetings with Leslie Johns back like three, four years ago, who were doing the community health improvement thing, we're meeting, you know, we're talking about housing and stuff. Anyway, this has been a long time coming, you know, so I'm, I'm very invested in this, and that's, it's just too bad, so.
Are you guys at all, well, housing is such a huge issue everywhere. I'd like to see, not, not with this, of course, not in two weeks or whatever, but, um, I would like to see a way that people who have a lot big enough can easily build an accessory unit.
Oh, yeah, that's a big one.
But, we need, I mean, I don't know how grants and stuff would be involved, but we have the need for it, people want to do it, but we're so afraid that Joel Ward is gonna come and say, you can't do that.
The city passed something recently that allows for that.
Yeah, there's a new ordinance.
So I could call you to figure out about it. Oh, good.
Yeah.
But even, even all the old, um, uh, trailers we have, I think if the city, it costs money, would have a person who knows how to go look at one and see if it's livable, that that should also be included, you don't allow the ones that are a dump, that people are gonna die in, but we really have a housing shortage here, um, so.
The, the issue that you run in with those is it has to be hooked up to some kind of sewer.
It has to be on the checkoff list.
Yeah, you know, so that, that's what happens with some of those.
Yeah, but that's why I'm saying, we have to make it a priority that works, and for people who, because I had four, I brought four of these, like, things from Tucson, who was told I couldn't rent them out, I couldn't do anything. So I sold them, but, um, anyway.
Well, it's good, and I think everybody would agree, like, housing is like a, it's not just one answer.
It's not gonna go away.
It's about, it's a bunch, it's like a basket of different things, we need multifamily, we need affordable, we need just market rate in general, and then, so it's like, well, what, we're, like, again, personally, I'm a CDVG guy, well, what can I do with CDVG to do something about it, it's like, well, housing rehab is one piece. Hopefully, if you start a habit, and the city is going for one of these every two years.
Yeah.
You can also do sewer lines, water lines, the, you can't just do streets for the sake of doing streets with colonialist money.
Okay.
Because it's gotta be water, wastewater flooding, or housing rehab, but you can if it's linked into a drainage system like it was designed with Tin Town. The, the catch basin catches the water, it mirrors it out, there's a curb and gutter with a little thing that channels it out, then they were like, okay, well, then that case you can do streets, right? So, um, anyway, there's also those things you can do with colonialist money too, and I've been making it my mission to make sure that our region, not just Cochise County or Bisbee, but all four counties, guys, get your projects ready. You know, we doubled our CDVG dollars coming into our region two colonialist cycles now. Instead of like one and a quarter million, it's like two and a half, two times one. So, um, that's something we can do, right? So.
And thank you for all your.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
Very well, it's my job.
So if there's, if there's nothing else, we can probably close, and bedtime, not just for you.